Chief Medical Officer that replaced Dr. Rebecca Sun and Shine. So happy to have him here today and present with us. We also have Jason Matthews, who's the interim Director of Human Services. And then we have Dr. Jeff Johnston, our Director of Medical Examiner's Office. So why these departments are coming to present today is that, as we know, heat toll in Maricopa County takes several hundred lives every year. And last year, the county really took a different approach and had these departments work together. We had ARPA funding that was available. Those ARPA dollars were used to do a lot of great work that you're going to hear about today. And the partnerships we had with the cities, towns, and mag really made a difference, as you'll see in our efforts last summer for the numbers that we have to share today. And so with that, I'm going to invite the team to come up and present to you all. And they will be available for questions afterwards.
Thank you, Marcie, and welcome, team. And before you begin, I want to welcome Dr. Staub here this morning, but also want to take time to thank Dr. Sun and Shine for everything she's done for us and for her service to Maricopa County. She's missed, but we're glad you're here. So thank you so much for joining us.
Chairman Galvin, members of the board, good morning. My name is Janine Fowler. I am the Director for Public Health. Nice to see all of you. Thank you for allowing us to be here today to talk about an issue that's close to all of our hearts, how we're responding to our heat season here in Maricopa County. We thought it would be helpful if we started by just giving a little historical because we realize everybody hasn't been around, nor have we, the whole time we've been working on this issue. So in 2005, if many of you are around to remember, we had a devastating heat season. The news, these are some headlines from the news, but we saw many, many people, mostly people who were unhoused, dying time and time again. At that time, public health had no surveillance system in place, and we knew that we had to do something. Also during that time, sort of organically, the Heat Relief Network came to be. And that's made up of Maricopa Association of Governments, municipalities, nonprofits, public health. And that organization still exists today. We're a lot more formalized than we were back in 2005, but we continue to do the work. So in 2006, the year after all of our heat deaths, that was the first year that public health and the Office of the Medical Examiner was able to develop a heat-related death surveillance system. And this system was the first standardized heat death surveillance system in the United States and produced monthly and annual reports. From 2006 to 2023, what public health mostly focused on was collecting as much information and understanding the issue as much as we possibly could in hopes that we would get some funding to actually put some of the learnings that we had into operations.
Ms. Lesko. Can you tell me what a cooling center evaluation is?
Absolutely. Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Lesko. Cooling Center, so we have a cooling center is where somebody goes basically to get out of the heat. We also have what we call respite centers, which are very similar, except a respite center is where someone can actually go and get some uninterrupted rest. At a cooling center, they don't allow people to fall asleep. It's mostly just for a minimal amount of time to get out of the heat.
And Mr. Chair and ma'am, how many cooling centers do we have? Oh, thank you. Mr. Chair, ma'am, how many cooling center evaluation centers do we have? And are they all run by Maricopa County or is it this network?
Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Lesko, I do have an upcoming slide to give you a sense of all the different cooling centers. So I did want to give you a sense of who is most at risk for heat-related death. Based on our 2012, sorry, 2023 heat death surveillance data, three in four deaths were among men, 60% were over 50, which includes myself. African-Americans and AIAN or American Indian Alaska Native are overrepresented. Nearly half had heart or lung disease. Forty-five percent with no living situations were homeless. And two thirds of our deaths involve substances. To give you a sense of just how serious this issue is, you can see over time that every year since 2013, we've increased the number of deaths occurring in Maricopa County. Especially worrisome is the, between 2022 and 2023, we'd had a 52% increase in the number of deaths.
Excuse me, sorry. Mr. Stewart and then Ms. Lesko.
Yeah, I noticed you have 2023 numbers here. Is 2024 data in?
Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Stewart. We were going to release 2024 data a little later in the presentation, but I do have it. I promise.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, do you have a scale based on percentage of population? Because our population has increased dramatically over the years. And so it's a little deceptive just doing the numbers. I wouldn't, well, maybe deceptive isn't the right word, but it's not accurate.
Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Lesko, I think I'm going to defer to Dr. Staub.
Yeah, thank you. So we don't have those rates prepared to present today. I would just point out that that increase certainly from '22 to '23 far outpaces the growth of the county in the same time period. So that really was a significant increase that we saw.
Okay, Supervisor Brophy McGee, I'm sorry, Ms. Lesko and then Brophy McGee.
And Mr. Chair and I'm sorry, I forgot your name. So team, team, do you, it seems like this is related to drug use. Is that correct? I mean, most of the increase is probably related to drug use since two thirds of the death, the people had substance abuse. Is that correct?
Yes, Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Lesko. We certainly see an increase amongst individuals who are using substances and see that reflected in the data. However, on the previous slide, we see a lot of other risk factors that certainly are populations that we want to focus on getting access to cooling.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You are going to get through this presentation, but up in Sunny Slope where I live, we have had a number of heat initiatives over the years. And I remember specifically a group of churches who offered overnight accommodations for homeless individuals. And they actually, this was several years ago, had to stop offering it because the population they intended to help were violent. So I guess I want to tie in a little more, and I bet you the presentation does, but into the change in the population. And when we track the heat deaths, is it, are you toggling it not just to the increase in population, but to the function of homelessness and addiction?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Galvin and Supervisor McGee. So I think it's important to note that, you know, there have been some changes over time, certainly in the numbers, but I think what hasn't changed are those individuals who are at highest risk. So we track not only heat-related deaths, but also heat-related illness. We really focus on the fact that everyone in Maricopa County, whether you're visiting or a resident here, is at risk. And there are certain factors during our heat season that can suddenly find someone who has regular access to cooling suddenly not having that same access. And so what we really focus on is setting up a system that is accessible to the whole community broadly across Maricopa County so that people can access cooling when they need it, regardless of their individual risk factors.
And Mr. Chair, just a quick follow-up question. The City of Phoenix opened any number of their public libraries. In my district, I heard complaints from constituents because of the behavior of the individuals frequenting the libraries for coolness and shelter, that they couldn't patronize the libraries anymore. Do you have any role in addressing that issue? Or are we simply just tracking, monitoring, and assisting?
Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Brophy McGee, I think there's a delicate balance between making sure our libraries are open to everyone and making sure they're safe for everyone. And so we've been working closely, not only with the City of Phoenix, but all of our cities and towns that open their libraries during heat season because we know they're a really good place for someone to come in out of the heat. One of the things that we're working with the cities on for the upcoming heat season is helping them hire more security for libraries. But yeah, there's, I don't think there's a perfect answer to that.
Last question. It brings to mind the light rail because that's also a cool place where the people can basically go on, I think, without a ticket. And that, again, it's that balance of the need to stay cool so you can survive and patronage. And I don't know how we fix that. But I would assume that your calculations about related to heat deaths would track the differences in the population.
Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Brophy McGee, we also started working more closely with Valley Metro last year. We hope to continue doing that through the City of Phoenix. But really, one of the things we're looking at is putting navigators on the light rail so that when we know people who are frequent travelers who may appear not to have a home or could use some other supports, really working with those individuals to try to get them into other care that they might need.
A quick question. Are those navigators paid or volunteers?
So Chairman Galvin, we, this was just a pilot project last year. And so I think we're still trying to figure out sort of how we get those navigators. They did it just, I think they only did it for maybe a month or so last year just to see kind of how that would look. But I think we're hoping to see if we could find some funding to do it because it's really hard to find navigators to do that for no money.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to just give you a sense of what the funding for heat has looked like over the years. So you'll see from 2006 to 2023, when I had talked about all of the data that public health was collecting, that was mostly because you can see where our budget was. With much support from the Board of Supervisors in 2024, we were able to, that orange line is ARPA funding. And with that ARPA funding, it allowed us to really put into place a lot of the learnings that we had, data we had collected and put that into action for 2024. And we'll talk a little bit more too about 2025. I did want to share some of those learnings that we were able to put into action in 2024. And this is mostly from that cooling center that we referred to earlier. But what we learned, and a lot of this is not going to be very surprising, but most of the people are getting to cooling centers either by walking or they can't get there at all. And we all know when it's 115, oh, you can't walk very far. So we knew transportation, it was a big issue to try to help people get to these cooling centers. Also, over the years, we've learned that our cooling centers all closed at 5:00 PM. We know that our heat stays, it stays hot here well at 7:00, 8:00, 9:00 PM. So what we did with our contracts with our cities and towns that we'll talk a little bit more about is that we required everybody to stay open till 7:00 PM to make sure we were covering those hottest parts of the day. And then also, what we learned is that people just didn't know where the cooling centers were. I mean, we did have, we have maps, we have other things to support people, but we just needed some good old-fashioned signage so people could, walking by, knew that that was a cooling center and a place that they could go in to get out of the heat. So we were able to use some funds to buy signs for all of our cooling centers in Maricopa County.
Supervisor Brophy McGee.
Thank you. ARPA funds are going away. So how is that, you know, I admire entities that have spent them in a way that reflects one time instead of the assumption of continuation. How is this going to impact our budget going forward? Is that later or can you discuss that now?
Sure, Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Brophy McGee. Right now, we're looking at opportunities of how we can apply. We've already applied for a few grants. We're looking for more opportunities to bring in funding. We're doing a lot of work to collect as much data as possible so we can make the case about why we should be funded to do some of this from some of our grantees. For example, we applied for an EPA grant, which we don't think is going to come to fruition this year. But we're also, we've been working closely with members. The federal government often comes to us to talk about heat because we are one of the warmer climates in the U.S. And we're consistently educating about the need for federal funding for warmer climates. I did want to share with you, we're very proud of our dashboard that we launched last year. And we're planning on doing more enhancements this year. I know this is a very busy slide, but if you, we keep this, what was really great about this dashboard is we were able to provide the community with data as quickly as we receive it. And we're able to support our community partners with situational awareness so they have a better sense of what's happening in their communities. So I can send the link. It's much easier to see on a computer than on a slide, and it's much more easier to navigate. So that's just a touch about our history. I'm going to turn it over to Jason to talk a little bit about human services work. And then Nick is going to talk a little bit about our outcomes in our 2025 season.
Chairman Galvin, members of the board, my name is Jason Matthews. I am the interim Director for the Human Services Department. And I'll be talking about some of the work that has been happening within the human services in partnership with public health related to this issue. So very specifically, as we think about our approach for heat-related deaths within human services, we really think about four different factors and four programs that really are the cornerstone of our response. One is around our emergency repair, very specifically the HVAC repair and replacement program. It's been a very successful program, ARPA-funded. And we'll talk about that more in a little bit. But it has been a great complement to our community in these last couple of years. Utility assistance was, which is a longstanding program and a partnership that we have with the federal government, especially helping with those high electric bills, especially during the summertime. And then assistance to special populations. These are things that we're already doing day in, day out, but they help to complement, especially to help to redirect individuals into some of these cooling centers and programs that you just heard about from Janine, as well as partners that we have through contracts that also help get folks into those particular services. So we'll first talk about the Emergency Home and HVAC Repair Replacement Program. This is one that assists low-income county residents, very specifically homeowners, that have broken or poorly functioning HVAC units with the goal of just preventing injury and death. To just look at some numbers from our last fiscal year, we served about 345 households overall, and 311 were just HVAC units alone. Okay, the other ones could have been maybe some electrical kind of systems actually helped the HVAC unit to be repaired and actually function because you just can't replace a HVAC unit, but maybe the AC, the electrical box isn't working very efficiently. And in total, last fiscal year, we served about 791 clients overall just with this program. Last fiscal year, in 2024, we spent about $4.9 million just on this program alone, and that was all in ARPA funds exclusively. The remaining budget for this program to get us through our next summer is $1.9 million. And as you can tell, the math is different on that, so we're not going to be able to serve as many folks. But we are looking at some programmatic changes in order to help stretch out those dollars the best we can so we can get through the summer, where our target is August 31, 2025.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
When you say 345 households, is that only single-family residences? Or does that include multifamily units? Or does that include multifamily units?
Chairman Galvin, members of the board, that is for single-family households.
Okay. And then when I see, go ahead.
Homeowners, I'm so sorry to interrupt.
Okay. And then when I see average job cost, $14,239, that's quite a lot.
Yeah.
How are we making sure that we're getting the best, most efficient job done, but at the best cost possible?
Yeah. Chairman Galvin, members of the board, that is a constant process of evaluation that we're always looking at, very specifically with our vendors. We know that there are going to be some outside factors that are outside our control. Inflation costs have really impacted services and costs across the board. And in comparison to the year before, the average cost was about $12,000, and then it's about $14,000. At the same time, we make sure that we have the very best procurement and vending system to make sure that we're not, we're just getting the best bang for our buck with local partners within the valley. We constantly evaluate that to ensure that we are getting the most amount that we can and being the most competitive we can as well. But we've also just seen that the high cost that we've seen across the board is really impacting this service especially.
And then how do we measure or account for whatever vendors we hire at $14,000 a pop is doing the actual job? And that these folks now have a fully functioning HVAC system?
Yes. Chairman Galvin, members of the board, we're really proud that our staff is actually there as a consumer advocate kind of role, not only to help to verify the information that comes in, including home visits at the very beginning of the job, but we also do that at the end of the job as well. We want to make sure that we don't get a bad customer review. Just to basically, you know, we want this to be a point of pride for the community. And so, we really ensure that those individuals do have that before and also after check. We also do spot checks with the vendors as well, just making sure, just dropping in on sites. How's it going? You know, is the work going well? Even having communication with the customers or the residents to say, how's the customer service levels for these things?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Kate, and then Debbie.
Thank you. I'm trying to figure out the, I'm still, whether it's $12,000 or $14,000, I'm not there yet. Now, you had said before that there, a lot of times, are accompanying repairs to the electrical box? Or what are the accompanying types of repairs that are driving up this cost?
Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Brophy McGee. To be very clear, the average job cost for 2024 is the $14,000 number that's on this slide. The reference to the $12,000 was the average job cost for fiscal calendar year 2023. So that's the difference. In this, this is solely for the HVAC repair or replacement. There may be some other funds, some other jobs that go into that, but we just highlighted just for the HVAC repair and replacement.
Chairman and Supervisor Brophy McGee. Is, we can get you a breakdown of what goes into this cost because I think in some cases, we're doing insulation. Some cases, we're doing electrical repair. But I think we could get a breakdown as to what goes into the average job cost.
We can.
If it's possible to get median cost, that would be helpful.
Median cost, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Jason. Going back to a previous slide with your partners, this one. Do you know off the top of your head if the Sun City Community Action Network is one of your partners that helps people with low income?
Yes. Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Lesko, members of the board. They are an informal partner. We don't, the partners that are listed here are those that have a funding contract or relationship with us. But we do have a very wide informal network, and that is a wonderful agency that we do connect with, not only for this service, but also for our Senior and Adult Services Program.
And Mr. Chair and Jason, so how does somebody become a formal partner instead of an informal partner?
Yeah. Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Lesko, and members of the board. We do have the examples that are listed here. When we get to the partnership slide, there is a competitive process for the Emergency Shelter Grants. That is one avenue. The other partnership that we highlight is with Solari or the 211 Program. And that was a sole source contract that was awarded with ARPA funds.
And Mr. Chair and Jason, I know air conditioners cost a lot. So if they have to replace it, I think it's like 18 grand or something was our last air conditioner. And do we, so my question is, do we still consider swamp coolers? Are they still made? Do they cost less? Because when I first moved here, that was a really good way of cooling a house, except when it got very humid out, I think, which was maybe July and part of August. But are they still available?
Yeah. Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Lesko, members of the board. I've had this exact same conversation, growing up in Tucson with a swamp cooler.
Right.
Same kind of thing.
Yeah, they work great.
Some of the programmatic changes that we're also looking at are those other options that can help to stretch that dollar. One of them is actually going back into that good old, like, what I call, from my dated reference, the good old swamp cooler. In some instances, they work really well. We do know that the individuals that we serve in this low-income basis, some of them do have some underlying health issues that may make the increase of humidity maybe counterproductive. But we do want to have those options available for folks, and that's some of the program adjustments we're looking at for the summer.
Thank you. I would just, I'm glad you're looking into it because they work well. I mean, they rest your duck system, I think. But they worked well, and I would assume they're less costly. I don't know. The other question I have is how do you determine if someone qualifies as a low-income county homeowner? And the reason that I ask this is that I know, I have a lot of senior citizens in my supervisor district. But I also know that a lot of my senior citizens who say, oh, I only get social security, also have like $300,000 or $500,000 in bank accounts, right? And so, do you ask if they have assets?
Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Lesko, members of the board. Right now, how we determine low income is 80% of area median income. I'm a numbers person. For me, that's about $57,600 in the Phoenix area, okay? We do verify income, and we do verify assets. We're not a financial institution, but we do verify that just to double-check because we have to be stewards of these funds. Some of the program adjustments that we are looking at is potentially lowering that a little bit further because again, if we're trying to make those dollars stretch, maybe we have to go to maybe 60% or play around with that to make it stretch a little bit further, to make sure we're serving the lowest income folks.
Well, and thank you. And the reason I bring that up is because we want to help the people that are really in need. I mean, and I don't know what percentage of people are in what areas of town that you're helping. But I do know there are some people that abuse because they have a low income, but they also have money in the bank. And they just use it because that's the system, right? And I, this is just a sad state of affairs, all of these people dying from death. And as I was driving here today, all the people out on the street, right on Jefferson Street, it's just so sad. And the people that you have to examine with all the drug-related deaths and heat-related deaths. If we could solve it, this would be a huge accomplishment, or help solve it, a huge accomplishment for the board if somehow we can connect different churches, community partners, because we're going to have less funds as Ms. Brophy McGee said. And so, we're going to have to rely on other people. And it's just, I don't know what the answer is, and I'm going to be on the Health Subcommittee. And so, hopefully, we can try to figure out a way to help these people get off of drug abuse. It's very sad. And with that, I yield back.
Chairman Galvin.
Giaro.
Thank you. Sorry, you keep us on task here. Thank you, Anita. No, to that point real quickly, on the HVAC program, do you prioritize in terms of like retirees, elderly? I mean, that'd be my gut. It would be the elderly first, like making sure, you know, that they're taken care of. But do you, I don't know. Is there some type of measuring stick to determine? Because we do have limited funds, and the need is across the board. But is there some type of evaluation that goes into that? I'm sure there is.
Yeah. Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Giaro, members of the board. At this point right now, we are just using that 80% AMI, okay? And because, and we'll go into some other slides, because of the other linkages that we make with other programs, we do have that opportunity of making a linkage from one program where we know, so like our, you'll see a partnership with our Senior Adult Services Program where we go and do an in-home case management assessment. Well, that assessment is a wonderful, it's a great, I guess, pipeline for clients because if they go in there and their AC is not working, and it's 100 degrees in the house, and we already know all their income because we get all of their financial information, we can automatically direct them over to this program for a full application, which includes a home visit as well.
Supervisor Brophy McGee.
Thank you. Such good questions by my colleagues, I appreciate it. Is SRP one of your partners?
Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Brophy McGee, members of the board. For the Emergency Home and HVAC Program, it is not. For the Utility Assistance, which is the next slide, both of the utilities are.
I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah.
And also, if, could you define or what are included in our special populations to Mr. Giaro's question?
Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Brophy McGee, members of the board. We actually have a slide that can go straight into that. Would it be helpful to continue on with the presentation?
Thank you.
And we can make sure to focus in on that one particular question.
Thank you.
Okay. So in continuing with our PowerPoints, Utility Assistance, as described, and we already started talking about this a little bit, is really a program to help low-income county residents who are unable to pay their utility bills with the goal of preventing injury and death and preventing homelessness. We know that especially in Arizona, especially Maricopa County, that that electric bill is going to be pretty high, okay? And so, we really, this is a great program to help those individuals. It is in partnership with SRP and APS who have individual programs to help with this. But for us, our, kind of our, kind of our space or gap is really to focus on smaller communities and rural communities. The City of Phoenix, Mesa, and Glendale, they have their own Utility Systems Program, which is fantastic. And so, if we get a call from those individuals, we just direct them over to their respective programs. But if we have someone that's in that smaller community or rural community, then we can actually run and operate to that particular program. Funding is provided by DES, again, APS, SRP, some of those treasury dollars as well. And this is utilizing a program with the wonderful acronym LIHEAP or Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program. That is a federal program. I will note that it has been a constant kind of advocacy point where a lot of these dollars tend to go to more cold weather states that have really harsh winters. We're catching up with a lot of advocacy that has happened around this table and beyond for those warm weather states to get similar assistance as well. But that is a vital part of this particular program to help fund that energy bill assistance. To give some numbers, in fiscal year '24, we provide utility assistance to 1,321 residents totaling about $1.2 million. And then for fiscal year '25, we have a total of about $1.2 million available to provide that same assistance. Okay, moving on to our next slide, and this is the Assistance to Populations slide. So very specifically, I want to focus in on two specific populations that the Maricopa County Human Services Department very specifically works in, works with day in and day out. One is those homeless or unhoused individuals through our Hand in Hand Program. And the other is our vulnerable seniors through our Senior and Adult Services Program. For Hand in Hand, this is a program that uses some emergency flex funds that prevents homelessness. This is really to help those individuals that are right on that first, the first stages of homelessness, that first element of crisis, where a little bit of intervention can make a massive impact for those individuals. In some cases, that emergency flex fund could be electric bill that is just off the charts, right? Maybe they're behind, you know, four, five, or six months, or something like that. And even the LIHEAP funds, they can help with some of it, but this helps to fill in that gap. In some instances, this could be a missed rental payment, or maybe a missed mortgage payment. But in other instances, this is actually working with those other partners. There was the conversation around, talking about individuals that are on the light rail, for example. We can actually work with some of those folks to say, hey, instead of working there, is there something we can help with very specifically that can end your homelessness very, very quickly and gets you right on the right track? In fiscal year '24, we did about 3,200 outreach activities in helping just over 1,000 unique individuals. And then for this, funding is coming from ARPA, a little bit of general fund. And we also have some, we have three contracts with local cities that don't have their own Human Services Department. And they actually have contracts where they pay us a little bit of funds, and we actually provide some of these hand-in-hand services for them. For the Senior and Adult Services Program, this is in-home case management that includes wellness checks. Part of this program is that we actually have individuals that when they call, they call the Senior Helpline at Area Agency on Aging. They're looking for anything from a home-delivered meal or maybe help with caretaking. Part of our job is we actually go out and we conduct a home visit. We have a 15-page assessment, thanks to the State of Arizona. So it involves about a two-hour conversation with those individuals, and that's everything going from their finances to what kind of insurance they have, some medical basic kind of information. It really helps to determine, since we're in the home, how are they doing? How's their home environment like? Can they take care of themselves? Most of the individuals that we're serving that are in this program are living by themselves, and they don't have family, or maybe their friends are kind of disassociated or just not connected with them. So we become that opportunity of making that linkage to other programs. As I mentioned before, one of the great programs we can link to is that Emergency Home Repair HVAC Program. And that's just one of those things to where maybe there are maybe medications to where it's hard to regulate their body temperature. And so, we'll say, if you feel warm, they're like, oh, I feel great. So we actually have a case manager that will go up and just check the thermostat. And they're like, gee whiz, this thermostat says 95 degrees, and it's not really working too well. How about I just have someone out and come out and look at this for you, okay? And it's a wonderful program that helps to really prevent future injury and hopefully prevent some illness and death.
Supervisor Brophy McGee.
Yes.
Thank you. Catching them before they fall into homelessness, that's exactly the area of the spectrum we should be working on. Thank you for that. The HVAC repair, I'm trying to think how long it's been since we've replaced ours. It wasn't, anyway. I remember a case from DCS where a church group provided funding to a family of five in a mobile home because their HVAC went out in the middle of summer. Now, homelessness is not an indication of child neglect, but keeping those kids in an un-air-conditioned home is child neglect. So in essence, they prevented removal from the home.
Right.
And kept that family intact, helped them stay on their feet. So I like this part very, very much. Thank you.
You're welcome. The, may I, thank you, Chairman Galvin, members of the board. Part of, to build upon the story that Supervisor Brophy McGee had with DCS, our case managers in the Senior Adult Services Program, they're also mandated reporters with APS, Adult Protective Services. And so, that's also one of our opportunities that whether it's, hopefully, we don't see any neglect. Hopefully, we don't see any self-neglect or any kind of financial or anything that's kind of there. But we do become that first line of defense to where if we do have to make that report, we do. And that is not the best stories and best examples, but it's a vital service for our constituents, and we're very proud to be able to do that.
I have a question. We've heard APS quite a bit, and Supervisor Brophy McGee brought up SRP. Does SRP not participate in this?
Chairman Galvin, members of the board, thank you for the question. So many acronyms. Previously for APS, that is Arizona Public Service, the utility company. For this APS, it's Adult Protective Services, which is a function of the State of Arizona.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, unfortunately, yeah. So in continuation. So in continuation, Chairman Galvin, members of the board, in the Senior Adult Services, last fiscal year, we were able to do about 8,300 home visits to individuals in Maricopa County, and of that, about 6,400 clients that we actually were able to, after the assessment, be able just to get them signed up for services. And I do want to point out, that's also part of the evaluation for those folks. Sometimes we'll get a call, and we'll drive up, and we just know that they're not going to qualify. Like, we can, we can just kind of tell. We still mandated have to go through the assessment, we still have to go through the financial information, we do all those different things, and we still provide a very valuable service because we have some folks who are like, I never thought I was going to get old, I never thought I was going to utilize any of these kind of services. And we just be able to walk them through the system, and we say, thank you very much, you're not a good fit for us, but we can check with that Adult Protective Service check, we can get them connected to some of those private pay services, and then we just move on to the next call, which I think is a fantastic service. And then my last slide is under Partners. As I mentioned beforehand, just highlighting two contracted partners that are very specifically helpful for emergency heat-related issues. One of them is around our emergency shelter grants, and this is a competitive process to really help those shelters, they operate year-round, but they're especially needed for those hot summer months in partnership with the other heat-related activities that you see here. Those, those emergency shelter grants help to support an overall shelter system that we help to contribute and help to support with a combination of other funding sources. And some great point of pride for this board is that in that support, we're actually able to help to increase the number of shelter beds in the overall area, including places in Sunny Slope and places in the Far West and Far East Valley, so it's just all not one shelter in, say, downtown Phoenix. And also to ensure that we can help with about 8,500 individuals in fiscal year '24. And that's usually counted in the form of bed nights. That does include some duplicate numbers, but again, we're very, very proud to be in part of that network.
I have a couple of questions on this. If no one else has any questions yet on Partners, because this is something I want to key in on. A lot of times, we hear in many different aspects that government is involved with. A lot of private corporations like to say the word private-public partnership, but a lot of times, they want the public to kick in, right? So it seems like this program is heavily dependent on ARPA, but I also believe that these monies are intended to be an investment to save in the long run because, right, and if you save now, then you're able to help people in the future and prevent further or worse things from happening. So we have a lot of large, private health networks here in the county. Are they involved at all whatsoever in working with us in these programs? Because if we're not spending money here, then a lot of these people are going to need very intensive medical care, which will be very expensive in the long run. How does that work, and what's their involvement with us on this as partners?
Yeah. Chairman Galvin, members of the board, I can start that question, and then I'll kind of defer to some of my colleagues here. We do have those informal partnerships with hospitals, clinics, however you want to see fit, because they are just become entry points for these services. And the heat-related, you know, example is the one that's highlighted a lot, but that's throughout the year. We, you know, we want to partner with anyone that wants to partner with us 365 days a year. But you're absolutely right that, I think that a lot of instances for our role where we best serve is where we can do those bigger capital investments, those one-time dollars to help build up a capacity, and we can turn over to other partners, other nonprofits, or other, maybe private entities to help out, to provide a service over time. But to talk about that partnership very specifically for clinics and other hospitals, turn over to Janine.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, I think your question was, are they providing funding? And to my knowledge, they are not providing funding.
Thank you.
Can I get to that? Anything to add?
Chairman Galvin, members of the board, the only thing I would add is, there are, so as part of the Community Health Needs Assessment, which we work with a lot of our nonprofit hospitals, they put together a community health improvement plan for their catchment area. And although it's not directly tied to heat, some of the investments, specifically, I'm thinking Dignity Health, that they put grants out into the community, and that work that they do does impact because they're working on homelessness and things that will impact heat. So it's not a one-for-one, but I do think that there's some investment going on. I also, I couldn't agree more, and I think that we need to do a better job of showing the data to the health systems. So what we're planning on doing, we do not have all of our hospital discharge data for 2024 as a leg, but when we do get that, our epidemiologists are planning on looking at over time if all of our investment is actually showing a decrease in emergency room visits for heat-related illness, to be able to go back to these hospital systems to say, our investment is contributing to you in this way. Like, what can you do to help us?
Yep. And then I want to make a point, I think Supervisor Stewart wants to jump in, because if we're looking at what we call a fiscal cliff, where the ARPA dollars are going to disappear, and frankly, the ARPA dollars were only around for a couple of years, so we had to make do from when you said this became a problem that we identified in 2005 up to about 2020, right? We're basically on our own. But I don't want it to be a situation where all of these programs, which are great, is now going to be expected to be on our back. And from what I keep hearing, that these are really good, worthy programs, these are investments now to save money and to save lives in the long run, and I don't want to speak for the entire board, so I'm speaking for myself here, but what I would like to see, and I'm not going to call them out by name, is some of these organizations get involved with us at the very beginning to help us make up for these monies that we're going to be losing. Because if we talk about public-private partnerships a lot here in Maricopa County, we need to accentuate the private part, because if they truly believe that we're doing good stuff here, then they're going to realize that that's going to be a savings for them in the long run. But I really would like to see them partner up with us right from get-go. Supervisor Stewart.
Thank you, Chairman, and thanks for the presentation. I kind of want to double-click on what Chairman Galvin said. It was a great question as it relates to preventative measures that's going to save the hospital money from things that they're not going to get reimbursed for, right? They will have to write off. And if we can help generate a report for what we think that might look like by partnering with them, I don't necessarily need to see it, but I think it's something that would benefit them to see. If we can continue with these programs, continue this trend line, I know it's only one year of heat-related deaths going down, but moreover, there's probably twice this number of people that show up at the hospital that creates a cost for the hospital. So if we can get ahead of that and show them, you know, the impact financially, that they may be able to save money if they partner with us and provide some of that funding that they may save by not having, I'd like to see that. And then what is the likelihood that the state will step in and help us with some of this funding, since we're the largest county in the state?
I'll start. Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Stewart, members of the board, I'll start, and then I'll turn over to my colleague, Janine. The state is going through their own financial challenges. We have seen some funding reductions in some other programs, especially through DES. I don't know if that's reflected on the public health side. I do agree that I think continued, I guess, support and articulating that this should be a partnership with the state will be very helpful. Janine?
Supervisor Stewart, Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Stewart, members of the board, I can tell you, we've not received any funding directly from the state for heat. They're having their own struggles. So they did appoint a heat lead for the Department of Health Services that we're working collaboratively with, but there hasn't been any direct funding from the legislature for heat.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Stewart.
Thank you. So how would we ask for funding? You know, the state occasionally will dole out funding for special projects that they find important. Have we knocked on that door, and what is the process for doing that? And can we do that? Will we do that?
Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Stewart, members of the board. In terms of asking for funding this year, our biggest concern, you'll see during Dr. Staub's presentation, that the nucleus of our response is AZ211. That is, we're directing everybody to 211 who needs transportation, and that's how we got people to these cooling centers, and that's why we think we were able to get the results we did last year. 211's funding is, is not sustainable, and in fact, without additional funding, they might have to shut down. So that has been the, that has been our emphasis this year. We've been working with Solari 211 and with the state to make sure our legislators know that we really need 211 funded in order to be able to respond appropriately to the heat. So even though it's not money maybe directly to us, it's money that would very much impact the community.
Thank you. Final question, Mr. Chair. So is it possible, so will we go with our intergov and ask the state for funding to cover this gap?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Stewart, we have been working with intergov and the legislature to say how important this is, show them the numbers that we've had to try to get that funded, so yes. And I believe also APS and SRP are partial funders for Solari, the 211.
Supervisor Brophy McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the ideas for partners which you probably already have in mind are the health plans, because they have discretionary monies that could, in the absence of the ARPA dollars, head this way. Does, does 211 still, I'm sorry, a lot of memories. Is it still like $2 million a year to have it 24/7, or what's the cost? Because they were getting set to go away a few years ago, and somehow or another, they came back.
Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Brophy McGee, I can't speak to their exact budget that they're getting from DES, but I can tell you that what they're trying to do is stretch their DES dollars, their state dollars, as long as they possibly can to keep 211 operational. So what they've done just this month, I believe, is they've, they're no longer 24/7, they're open from 9 to 7, only, simply because they want to try to keep people employed as long as they possibly can, in hopes that the state will come up with additional monies.
Mr. Chairman, there are a couple of rocks out in the parking lot we could probably squeeze that would be more helpful, but I think if you're going to stop the astronomical costs and human catastrophe that comes out of this, you start with prevention. So we can work on our individual contacts in the Arizona Legislature and hope for prioritization by a key member needed on a key budget vote. It's just so variable, and so many of those wonderful programs go over the side of the ship as you sail into sinny die. Whatever we can do to break down the silos, what I was thinking is, in our emergency management, the way it was presented is that we're coordinators and we're not so much the firefighters on the ground spraying the water, but we coordinate all those efforts, public, private, intergovernmental, with the idea of breaking down those silos, bringing everybody together and focus on funding gaps and priorities. I was so impressed with how the county did that, or does that with emergency management, given that, again, a lot of these funds are going away as they were intended, that that might be a suggested higher and better use of our amazing, amazing public health resources. Thank you.
Supervisor Lesko.
Thank you. A couple of things. First, to address Supervisor Stewart's question about how do we get money from the state, may I suggest you ask your state legislators? They are, you know, if I remember right, the Senate President, Warren Peterson, said that every state legislator or senator is going to get money in the budget, and like they did, I think, last year. And so if you convince them they can do that, they can also increase the budget on different things. It's up to the state legislators. My experience, I would assume Supervisor Brophy McGee and Supervisor Gallardo have the same experiences, they're going to prioritize what they want to prioritize, and they're going to expect the county just to be on their own. And, you know, they don't want to raise taxes. They'll say, okay, you county supervisors can raise taxes, we don't want to do it. They want to cut taxes, right? And so I would say, talk to the state legislators. But my question is, and I'm going back to the, a couple of conversations ago on the HVAC assistance, is that the only program that we can control how we ask who qualifies?
Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Lesko, members of the board, that is one program where we do, it's solely within our purview to control some of those qualifications.
And so, Mr. Chair, and Jason, my question then is, are we allowed to ask, is Maricopa County allowed to ask on these programs if the people own their own house and what their assets are? Are we allowed to do so if we're getting money from the federal government? I assume we are on some and aren't on others. Is that accurate?
Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Lesko, and members of the board, for the HVAC program, as it currently is structured, the majority of those funds are coming from ARPA, which does have some more flexibility in the qualifications. So we do have that purview. And one of the things that we do ensure is that those individuals are owning their own resident, for example, as part of their key asset, as mentioned beforehand. But we do have the opportunity to add on to that, and those are some of the opportunities we think about, so we can kind of stretch those dollars as far as we can. And I think that that could help with any other type of future funding conversations, kind of tie that to the qualifications eligibility.
And Mr. Chair, and all, Janine, and Jason, may I suggest that if we're not doing so, we do an asset test, because I really want the limited amount of money going to the people that really need this. I mean, this happens at, there's, I don't blame the people because it's the program, right? The program allows for people to get money from the government, and we're allowing it. And this happens at the state level, it happens at the federal level, people that don't really need it, but they're like, hey, my neighbor got it, and so-and-so got it, so therefore I'm going to get it. And this happens with all things, veterans, everything. And there's some people that go, well, I won't apply for that because it's not right. They think it's morally wrong. But there's other people that are just like, well, the program's there, why not, why not use it? And they don't really need it. So I would really want to find out if we are asking if the people have other means, like if they own a home, can they get a more, they should get a mortgage, or reverse mortgage? Or if they have money in the bank? I really don't think that we should be using our limited funds for those folks. And I yield back.
I have a comment, because I want to echo what Supervisor Lesko said. I think she's made really phenomenal points. If we look at an issue like long-term care, you know, if people have considerable assets, we have seen that their adult children will try to move those assets into a trust so they can take advantage of Medicaid and say, hey, the elderly parent here is completely broke, when that's actually not the case. And so I think Supervisor Lesko makes a great point, because if we see elderly people on a fixed income, but let's say they're a veteran who doesn't have assets, and they're not going to get access to the program, but for someone who has a second house in Prescott or Sedona can, that is entirely unfair and goes against the spirit of what the program is for. So I echo her points. Thank you.
And...
Supervisor Brophy McGee.
I was just agreeing.
I also agree.
Yes. And Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Lesko, members of the board, since we do have, we have not only the opportunity, but we have to update this program in order to get more out of it for the summer, hands down. So we'll make sure to put those together and also make them available for the board for consideration.
Thank you.
And, really, the last thing was already covered on this slide, as far as the partnership with Solari. It does underscore the conversation that we did have, because the one, human service contract we have with Solari is ARPA funds, and that's set to run out this fiscal year. And, but it kind of underscores the other conversation that we had. And with that, that concludes my part of the presentation. I'm now going to turn over to Dr. Nick Staub for our next part.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Good.
All right. Chairman Galvin, members of the board, good morning again. I'm Nick Staub, Chief Medical Officer for Maricopa County Public Health, also served as incident commander for our response to heat last summer. One thing I... One thing I'd like to just, as I kind of want to bring focus back to those who are at highest risk, we're talking a lot about the services that are provided to homeowners and fixing HVAC, but we know from our data that those members of our community who are at highest risk are probably the unsheltered, so they don't have a house to fix, individuals who are challenged with substance use and using drugs, who have other medical issues. Heat is a risk multiplier. And so we talk about the role of our healthcare systems in responding to this. They are working with us in trying to address those factors that increase risk. We work very closely with them to make sure that they're working with their patients to make sure that they're lowering their risk from heat. One thing we did with Solari and 211 this last year is we matched the data of everyone who is calling into Solari with access providers, with the access plans, because we know that there are a lot of resources in those plans. And if we can just make sure that those plans know that their, that their patients are calling Solari, they can step in and provide some of those services that can lower that risk. So we are working with the plans, they're engaged with us. We're getting a lot of attention for our surveillance system. So as Janine said, since 2006, we've been developing this system, working very closely with the Office of the Medical Examiner and Dr. Johnston. So I think we have a real opportunity here to highlight the work that is being done. We can show what having a couple million dollars can help do, but we will continue to do this work and the Heat Relief Network will continue to do this work moving forward. So I'm the Ringer. This is the 2024 data that we will plan to release later today, and I'm sure I will get a lot of requests for interviews. This shows that 2024 was our first year since 2014 where we saw a decline in the number of heat-related deaths. So this is significant. This is something that we are very proud of in public health because we think this shows that both our data and our planning, we're able to effectively respond and change the direction of this trend. And in a record hot summer. So if you look at 2024 compared to 2023, we had more days over 110, we had more consecutive days over 110, our heat season started earlier in June and it went well into October. So not only were we responding to a longer season, but we saw that decline in heat-related deaths. So I really think that we have something going here, we have the right information to act on, we just need to continue that effort and continue to get attention to this issue. So we've talked about Solari. Obviously, we are advocating for that to continue. Directing folks to 211 has been very successful. Adding a transportation benefit so that folks not only know where their nearest cooling center is, but can get to it, is really important. Also, to all of Jason's programs, to the programs that are being run in other jurisdictions, 211 is a critical resource to connect folks who need that help to those, to those resources. So we really see this as a backbone of our response and have been advocating to make sure that we can continue to use it. We have expanded the availability and access to the Heat Relief Network and cooling centers by supporting those organizations, those jurisdictions that are running the cooling centers. Here you can see that we significantly increased the number of respite centers. So as Janine mentioned earlier, those are centers where people can rest in cool spaces, really allow their bodies that opportunity to cool down that is so important, especially into the later evening hours. The City of Phoenix operated two overnight shelters. They have really exciting EMS data that shows that in the area around those cooling centers, they were able to reduce the number of EMS calls for heat-related illness. So we're excited for them to share that data and for other jurisdictions to recognize that these have a really positive impact on the community, not just for those who are accessing the system, but for the EMS systems as well.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
It's great to see about 95, 94 cooling centers. Are they evenly distributed throughout the county?
We are working on that, Chairman Galvin and members of the board. So here's a map of that Heat Relief Network. As we work to really help coordinate, so again, we talked about the coordination effort of public health, working with our different partners to identify where we're seeing heat-related deaths, so that's part of our surveillance system, so we know where we need these sites. And so that is an important part of working with the system and working with partners to make sure that we have those sites in every part of our county, that we have those respite centers that are open later hours in every part of the county so that people can access them, but not just randomly in places, but really where people need them so that we can increase access.
And the reason why I'm asking is that Mesa is the largest piece of my district. Mesa has over 500,000 people. It's actually the 34th, excuse me, 34th largest city in America, larger than Miami or San Francisco, but a lot of people in Mesa live in mobile home parks. And so when I talk to the mayor out there and the council member, it is something that they're very worried about and they appreciate all the stuff that Maricopa County does. But if there's any challenges in identifying or getting places to be procured for cooling centers, I ask that you please contact my office so we can alert with them and work with them. I think that's why we're here, right? Five members is to help facilitate relationships with the cities and towns in our districts.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Galvin. I think it is important and we're excited to show not just our data, but again, I mentioned the City of Phoenix's data because I think as we show that to other jurisdictions, they can see what the value is in having and offering some of these sites. Again, because we're going to need sustainable funding so that they can continue to operate. A lot of the funding that was used for partners in four jurisdictions was to extend those hours into the evening and then on weekends and holidays, which we think had a really impact, a large impact. A couple other statistics from our response that I just wanted to highlight. Again, the Lyft rides were provided benefit through 211, so both Maricopa County dollars, as well as we mentioned APS and SRP, provide funds to get transportation to sites. We were able to provide some services for pets so that folks who were accessing cooling centers with their animals also, that they felt like they could get there. That was one of the things from our cooling center evaluation that we learned is that if people don't, can't access services for their pets, they will just not go to a cooling center. Heat kits, again, working with partners, identifying items that are needed.
Chairman, if I may pop in, that is from your use of your Community Solutions Fund, so thank you.
Yes, thank you. Again, the heat kits, working with partners, identifying other things besides cool spaces that people need. There are a lot of philanthropic groups that want to participate in this effort, and so we are working to bring them in so that they can, again, work with their communities to provide these kits, these items for folks. We know that water is also a critical need for individuals who are accessing cooling centers, so we're working to make sure that these sites are working both within the system, with their local jurisdictions, and with Maricopa County if needed to get water to the sites.
Are these water bottles we're paying for or are they donated by private charitable organizations or just private organizations?
So Chairman Galvin, members of the board, we are paying for, we're working with St. Mary's Food Bank to distribute water to cooling centers that request it. But again, we also have water donation sites as part of the Heat Relief Network. So this is really a community-wide effort to resource these sites. Again, we want to provide a backup if a center needs it and doesn't otherwise have access, but we, again, are working as a whole community to make sure these resources are in place.
And I'm sure you're trying everything you can to procure, let's say, water bottles, and I'm not saying you're not, but I just think it's worth highlighting. You know, there are a lot of big, huge corporations here in the valley, some of them are, excuse me, in the Fortune 500 or Fortune 100 list, and if they haven't contributed any water bottles as of yet, I would think it would be great if you made a few phone calls over there to see if there's any way that we can get assistance, because that's the least they can do, right? Is help pay for water bottles. It's not something I feel like we should have to pay if we can depend on the charity of these organizations that I think really want to make sure that people are okay. And I do want to highlight, you know, in 2024, I was able to, with my office, procure those dog booties for folks, and I spent a day at one of these centers literally handing them out and just to see the gratitude on the people's faces because, you know, a lot of people in society don't really have sympathy for homeless people. A lot of people think that they've brought it upon themselves, and whatever choices people make in life, they're still there in that room. And these dogs are part of their family and they consider a dog part of their family. And if they can't bring a dog in there, they won't go in there. And that was a very gratifying and humbling experience was to literally work with everyone here at the county, who it was great to get those dog booties out to these folks. It was wonderful. So thank you. Every little bit helps. Supervisor Brophy McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So District 3 is home to one heck of a lot of these stations and network locations, and in fact, it encompasses all or part of six City of Phoenix Council districts, buts up to another. I think Supervisor Gallardo has most of the rest. But what I wanted to offer, first of all, is how highly regarded you are by my City of Phoenix council, council member counterparts. They think the world of you to the point where they are looking at budget cutting and they, they want to eliminate Phoenix Public Health. Now whether that's good or whether that's bad, but it speaks very well to your efforts. And I know Mayor Kate is bound and determined to get us to help with the homeless problem. So anything that I can do from my office to assist you with connecting to the different council offices or City of Phoenix departments like Neighborhood Solutions, Office of Homeless Solutions, Neighborhood Services, please let me know. You're doing wonderful work, we just have to make our dollars stretch further. And I really appreciate Chairman Galvin bringing that up as well as Supervisor Lesko. And really focus on what I see as our core mission, which is connecting everybody, getting everybody on the same page so that we can better expend our valuable taxpayer dollars. Thank you for the work you're doing. Thank you.
Supervisor Lesko.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And to any of you, I just have a suggestion on this one, heat-related deaths. I brought it up before. You may want to do it also as a percentage of population because I assume that then it would show a larger reduction in heat deaths as a percentage of the population because I assume our population has increased, although the number has, of actual people has decreased. The other question I have is how does the, how do the Lyft rides happen? Like, are we talking like homeless people have their mobile phones and they just call 211? Is that what goes on?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Galvin and Supervisor Lesko. So, so yes, 211 does arrange the Lyft rides for individuals who are calling. It is both a to and from ride to get them to the cooling center and then to wherever they need to go when it's, when it's done. So we have really great data through Solari showing the number of individual users, so 4,700 individual users taking, using that service. And Solari did some really interesting work. They do, again, they have their own case management service as well. And so they were able to identify individuals who were frequently using the Lyft ride, looking into whether there was any misuse in that system. You know, the more we thought about it, these are individuals who are at risk every day from the heat. And so if they need to use that resource multiple times, that, that makes sense. But we also were thinking of what other resources can we get to those individuals that they may need besides the ride? And so Solari was able to make some of those connections and I think it was of great value.
And, Mr. Chair, and to that point, because of the transportation costs, how many of these cooling centers are near the light rail since the light rail, as Supervisor Brophy McGee brought up, is used?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Lesko, and members of the board. We have, as part of that evaluation and part of the decision on where to recruit sites, we look at access to public transportation, not just light rail, but bus routes as well. We actually have a, an epidemiologist who's currently looking at the heat-related deaths and access to cooling sites, referencing the transportation routes as well. So really working on that to try and be very strategic on where we're putting resources to make sure that they're meeting the needs of the community.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chair, I think I have one last question, at least for now, and that is, I wondered if any of you have any suggestions for people like the panhandlers on the side of the road or homeless people or whatever. There's always people asking, including me, like, what can I do, right? What can I do? Don't know if I should open the window, not open the window, whatever. I don't want to give them money because somebody told me that worked in social services, don't give them money, that they'll, you know, use it for drugs or whatever. And so I was thinking, you know, how about cards, you know, that have the numbers of services on it? Does Maricopa County print any cards that we can give to the churches? I mean, everybody asks, like, what do I do? Because they're in this moral dilemma, right? And so if we don't have this, besides just these 211 cards, I think we should have some kind of card so that people can get help. So what is your answer to that?
Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Lesko, members of the board, we, the answer is a yes and I always like to tell folks, it's their individual choice if they want to give to panhandlers, that's entirely up to them, that's their choice. But then I share my own experience working in this system. And connecting people to resources the most efficiently and accurate way is the best. Those kind of cards and that kind of information is things that we don't currently have now. We've been talking about that very internally as far as how to best connect that because we get those calls, right? And having something in the combination of electronic resource, it could be an app or just having a really updated website, because sometimes there's a lot of updates. I use the information that we're even talking about here on these cooling centers. The information that's on that website, we like to make sure that our partners know about that first and foremost so they can share that information with whomever. But I do think that it's a big opportunity, whether through cards, but also how to get that information out to local churches and local neighborhood groups, because a lot of folks within our system, they might know that, but that doesn't help my neighbor. So.
Okay, well, can somebody give me phone numbers and I'll buy some cards? I mean, I'll print some cards, they can't be that expensive to print up some cards. And when you're talking about, Mr. Chair and Jason, when you're talking about electronic, do a majority of the homeless people, have you found, do they have cell phones?
Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Lesko, members of the board, that's, that's hard to quantify. I am both surprised on how efficient that communication network is for the unhoused. There is a lot of folks that do have some kind of phones. So I am kind of surprised. And at the same time, we have to plan for both and, because, just because some folks have a phone, doesn't mean that everybody has it. So having cards or some paper material is very helpful.
And, and, Mr. Chair and Jason, so I think that's a good idea because if you can blast out, if somehow you can identify through services who the homeless people are, and if they have cell service, you know, blast out recommendations on where they can go for services, but I also think you need physical cards. And I would hand them out, and I know people that I know would hand them out because they want to help people, the natural instinct to help people, and, but don't know what to do. So with that, I yield back.
Supervisor Brophy McGee.
So I will partner with you, but have a QR C code on the back that will help connect those individuals. One of the many projects I worked on in the legislature was youth who had run away from home. And one of the most efficient ways to connect with them, many of whom were being trafficked, was the poster, you don't want to do this, pasted on the telephone pole with the numbers. You could, you could tear off a number and call a number. But to your point, Supervisor Lesko, the more we can do, the better. And I'm thinking we can get some big corporations to underwrite water bottles and Lyft rides and that type of program so we don't, we coordinate it, but we don't necessarily pay pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Galvin, Supervisor McGee, Brophy McGee, a couple of comments. The cards that you mentioned, I really think our best option is pushing everybody to 211, because they have so many resources. So, they're able to assess when someone calls, are they a veteran? Okay, I can send you over here for these services. When, in our experience, when we have a lot of resources, they tend to get outdated very fast. And people don't know kind of where they fit. But that's been the beauty of 211. They have really just grown over the years. And they've got a fantastic operation. If we could just figure out how to fund them appropriately and funnel everybody to them, we can get people the resources that they need.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I couldn't agree more in terms of 211. It is what these individuals, this organization does. I've been down there, I've done the tours, I've sat with these folks, I sat with the CEO. They just do remarkable work. It's not just heat relief. It's, it's everything from domestic violence, suicide prevention. It's, it's young people being trafficked. It is the one place to go for help. The biggest problem, it is the biggest secret around. It really is. I hate to say it, it is. We all know what 911 is. I can go to my kids and on my baseball team, they know exactly what 911 is. They have no idea what 211 is. And it's like the biggest secret. But, so, whatever we can do, and you're right, they've done a remarkable job of moving forward and getting out there and getting for, you know, people more familiar with 211. But, but, but there's more we can do in order to get that number out there. In terms of the shoe cards or the little palm cards, I think you're absolutely right, Supervisor Lesko. I think those types of cards are so critical. They really are. We're going to start it again. We do our summer programs and our, and our water days, which the county is very supportive of. All the different departments come out. And it's just leaving information on the table for people to grab and to have in their wallet, or have to make a phone call. We did create a directory, we'll share with you, a directory of every county department around. And we give that to everybody that we see out there. We have it at all our tables. We're, we used at the car show this Saturday. We had on the table. Anyone can come, pick up that sheet and have every department direct telephone number is located on it. So, I think it's, it's critical to be able to utilize stuff like that, that goes such a long ways in helping folks. But Mr. Chairman, I'm going to get on my little soapbox here real quickly, because this is something I've been harping on for the longest time. We're the fourth-largest county in this country yet. And I have, people are going to throw rocks at me, I don't care, but it's true. We don't have the infrastructure in place to communicate with folks, other than social media. We saw with COVID, the biggest problem we had is how do we get information out to people in regards to COVID? How to get tested? How to get the vaccine? How do we talk to businesses that are struggling with COVID? It was the biggest struggle. We really, and this isn't something long-term, Mr. Chairman, we need an infrastructure in Maricopa County to be able to communicate to the masses. And I know there are people a hell of a lot smarter than I am to tell us how to do that, but we have to have it. School districts are phenomenal. Anytime there's a shutdown with the click of a button, they can notify 5,000 parents like that, that their school is being shut down. When there is a kid or someone that is, is an Amber Alert, you see it everywhere. I get it on my phone. I see it on the freeways. I mean, you get all these alerts that there's an Amber Alert. Yet, I think we need to have a similar infrastructure to be able to communicate to the masses. It's one of the biggest struggles. We said all the time, how do you engage the public? And as, and let's be honest, as candidates in the past, what do we do as candidates? How do we, how do we communicate to our constituency in a campaign? How do we talk to them? We hire consultants to tell us how to do that. And we, and we spend a lot of money in communicating our message. This is no different. How do we communicate to the masses, to, to the public, to the people of Maricopa County, the fourth-largest county? I can understand Greenlee County not doing it. But Maricopa County, if we have an air quality issue with the click of a button, be able to talk to people about an ozone, an ozone problem. If we have a public emergency like COVID, boom, be able to tell everybody, here's, here's some information, here's what to do, here's where to go. Instead, we, we use social media, which is important, don't get me wrong. We do press releases, but we should be doing so much more. We really should. I don't know what that infrastructure would look like. I couldn't tell you what it would cost. But I think from a long-term perspective, and looking forward, we need to create, have that infrastructure in Maricopa County, where we can communicate with the masses. 211 is too vital for it to go away. It offers so many services. Like I said, everything from domestic violence, suicide prevention, substance abuse, someone trying to get off of alcohol or drug addiction. They can call 211 and get help. Someone who is a runaway can call 211. It's more than just heat relief. But I think 211, and, and I'll be the first to run down to the legislature and talk to folks to say how important 211 is, because if they don't know, and I venture out to say that the legislature has no idea what 211 is. I'd bet anything, they have no idea what 211 is. They need to get their asses down there and find out what 211 it is. Too valuable. We got to keep it going. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To that point, you know, I've thought about other jurisdictions around the country. When there's a tornado, or when there's a hurricane, right? It's very easy, or vital for these organizations to send out an immediate text alert and say, hey, emergency, right? It comes right across your TV screen. You get the beeps on your, on your phone. And I've heard, you know, officials here, including our governor, compare these heat issues to a natural disaster. But as we saw in one of the very first slides, how many days are we over 110 degrees? It's on 60 different days. So, I've thought about the same thing. But at what point do people start tuning you out and be like, all right, we get these alerts all the time? So, that's the conundrum we have, because it's a rolling disaster over 60 consecutive days, or 70 days throughout the summer. But I think the point he makes is fantastic about communication and maybe utilizing local TV networks and radio stations. And I know you guys already do that, but if there's a way we can impress upon them to do more. I have one question. When we have these people come to a cooling center, now we have direct, actual contact with these people, right? That's an opportunity we have. When they leave the cooling center, do we provide them any information, pamphlets, cards, when they walk out the door?
Yeah, thanks Chairman Galvin and members of the board. We do. So, I think, you know, the last point on this slide is, is the 211 cards. And we really thought about it a lot at the beginning of last season. We had both printed paper cards, as well as plasticized cards, because we know that a lot of the folks who may be carrying these around are going to be carrying them around for a while, again, if you're unsheltered, or, we wanted that to last. We worked with healthcare systems to make sure that social workers in the emergency departments had access to them. So, as people were being discharged who they thought were at high risk, they were getting them 211 cards. We worked with all of our homeless service providers to make sure that they were handing out 211 cards. So, while I agree that we definitely need a communication system that's able to get out to the masses, I think we also need to be very strategic about who we're getting certain messages to. And I think using our partners that are already working with these high-risk populations, making sure that they know how to get access to 211 for their populations, whether that's by a call, or using an internet web-based site. They know those populations best. And so, that's really where I focus a lot of my work, is working with those community providers.
If I might add too, I think one of our successes, it's really City of Phoenix's success, but since we're partners, at the Burton Bar Library, they had community bridges, navigators there every day. And what was amazing about that is, we had people coming to the library every single day. And it wouldn't be till maybe day 30 or 45, where these individuals were like, okay, I'm ready now. I've seen you 45 times. Now, I'm ready to get some help. Help me. And they were able to put, get so many people into housing just by being there every day and seeing the same face over and over again. So, we really want to, I think these cooling centers and respite centers are also a great opportunity to link people to care, especially if they're coming back time and time again. So, we're really looking at, how do we partner with those organizations like CBI to be in more respite centers, especially in those areas where we know they could use the support.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I just wanted to add to what Dr. Staub said, is we do have 211 cards, and we can get them to your offices, so that you can distribute to your constituents. And then, last year, we also partnered with Clear Channel Communications. And they provided free outdoor board space to advertise 211, which we think was very effective. And we anticipate asking them again this year to see if they could also participate. And then, if the chairman would, would be interested in this, we could provide an update on what communications infrastructure we currently have. We do have the ability to get information out during evacuations and through our emergency management group. We also have, you know, the Gov. Delivery System, which has tens of thousands of people signed up. So, we do have some tools. And then, that would be an opportunity to get some additional feedback from all your offices on what we should further explore along those lines.
Supervisor Lesko.
Mr. Chair, my mind keeps going back to what Supervisor Brophy McGee talked about, and that is stickers, actually, on light poles. And so, I would like to maybe pursue that with you guys, because I bet perhaps APS and SRP would allow us to put stickers on their light poles, because you're right. I think that is a very effective way to do it. Just put stickers on the light poles, 211, if you need help. Thank you. I yield back.
Mr. Chairman, to that point, I think even, I think, I mean, I'll bring this up with our PTA. I mean, I think that 211 should be at every bus stop. It should be at every light rail station. It should be all over the place. It really should. I think that is such a valuable number. I, I love the sticker idea, but I think, I mean, that's, I mean, we talked to Valley Metro on, on that and our PTA to see how we can do. But, you know, the more we can promote that 211, I think, the better. And then, the other part is getting the legislature to realize the importance of that. Real quickly, what is a heat kit? What's in it?
So, thank you Chairman Galvin and Supervisor Gallardo. They could be a variety of things. So, there are cooling towels in there, hats, sunscreen. We also worked specifically with some of our, some of our community partners to do almost like a first aid-type kit. And then, we actually partnered with some nursing students from ASU, who actually spent time down at the Burton Bar Library to hand those out and just go over kind of basic wound care and that kind of stuff, so that the people have those. So, it's a generic term for really whatever the community is willing to give us to put into a kit, but focused on providing some sort of heat.
I don't want to be facetious, but do these hats and towels have contact information printed on them, that in any which way, we can be opportunistic about getting communication out?
So, Chairman Galvin, to my knowledge, no. But, but again, I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Stewart.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm really happy that you brought up the Navigator Program. You know, sometimes it's, it makes sense to steal with pride successes from other communities. And Chandler, we set up a very robust, over the past, what, seven years, robust Navigator Program, that actually works incredibly well. We see an 80% rate of housing for homeless. We get them into that, you know, very often, the first opportunity, if we can get them a shower and food, and then get them the wraparound services, or at least introduce those to things. And you mentioned it perfectly. Sometimes it takes 15, 20 contacts to get that person off the streets. Many times, they're, because they're using drugs, or whatever that may be, if we can get to them with a one-on-one communication with a person, that would be great. I don't know, you know, I know it's in its infancy to try to talk about something like this, but that program absolutely works, and it saves lives, and it rehabilitates people, and it works. So, I'd love for us to look at that program as maybe the easiest path to get some respite. And I know we're talking about heat, but the overall homeless issue, it all ties together with drug abuse, et cetera. But the Navigator Program in Chandler is an outstanding program. And I know there's some similar ones in other communities. But we really need to look at that as it relates to health and human services and financial wherewithal, if we don't already have it. But...
Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Stewart, members of the board, our, the Hand-in-Hand Program that we talked about a little bit, that is the closest that we have to a Navigator Program. And that is everything from, we literally have a staff member who partners with other city departments, like flood control and McDOT, to go out to river bottoms to really get connected to those individuals. But really, the intention is to really help to connect individuals that they encounter, that may be homeless or unhoused, and get them into those respective kind of programs. And there's some opportunities to add to that, but we do have some of that.
We have one person that does that?
Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Stewart, members of the board, the one example I gave is one person. We do actually have a smaller team, around three or four of those individuals with individual contracts that does service the entire county.
So, I'm sorry, what are you going to expand on?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Stewart, if I may add, the cities primarily are responsible for their jurisdictions. Our focus is in unincorporated county for those navigator services. And our partner is community bridges. And where we tend to go out is when it's county-owned property, such as flood control, or washes, or in unincorporated county areas like Sun City. And if there's a situation, then we go out with our services, offer services, and try to get those people housed. So, it's very similar to the Navigator Program.
Thank you, County Manager. Would it make sense, then, to contract with the municipalities versus standing up our own, since we're in those markets? And then, maybe, I know we have some other county areas that are a little bit more broad, but would it make sense to partner with them instead of having our own?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Stewart, we can certainly look into that. We focus only on the unincorporated areas. So, a lot of times, cities are challenged to provide that enforcement, because sometimes we also have to partner with the sheriff's office when we are responding. So, but we can see if there's contracts that they currently have that we can partner with.
Right. Thank you.
All right. I will, excuse me, Chairman Galvin.
Supervisor Brophy McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This has been such an interesting discussion, and I appreciate so much the thoughts from my colleagues. Fentanyl is 25 cents a pill. So, that is certainly contributing to our problem, because my friend at the Salvation Army, they have a 40% vacancy rate. They charge nothing. But when the drug is so plentiful and so cheap, you know, the choice is always going to be, almost always going to be to continue drugging. I am hoping that policies now being implemented will choke off that supply, increase the cost, and that will increase our opportunities for engagement. So, in that relation, I hope we are ready. That's one point. The other point, I learned this from legislating the silver alert. If you have too many alerts come across, you become, and that was one of the measures by which they, I think I added autism to silver alert, they, they won't do it, because then they become deaf to the alerts. But I keep looking at this from our viewpoint as a coordinator, in what is, in essence, a rolling disaster, that it is imperative to identify and build out the essential must-haves in the network, like 211. If you don't have 211 and a responsive service. And Mr. Gallardo, I did, I'm happy to report, take a tour of 211. And those operators are incredibly well-trained. And that's why it's essential to keep them on board. So, if you could provide more information, back in the day, it was $2 million to keep it open 24/7. You know, I don't know what the cost is now, but I very much appreciate that. And we'll try and make it, since it's kind of chump change down there, I will try and make it somebody's priority. And thank you. That's, that's it.
And Mr. Chairman, if I can, please. Just to clarify, when I, when I talk about an infrastructure, we do a monthly newsletter in my office. Send it out to 12,000 people. I got a million people in my district, and I'm only sending out to 12,000. You can't tell me there's a, I mean, that's the infrastructure I'm talking about. We need to be able to figure out, I'm not talking about these emergency alerts and stuff. I use that as an example. There has to be a way. There has to be a way in which all five offices have an ability, and we all have the same amount of people, almost a million, to be able to communicate to that, the masses. And, and how that is created and structured, again, there's, there's smarter people than me that know how to create that, but there has to be a better way for us to communicate to, to the people and let it be around 211. 211 is just too important. It should be tattooed everywhere. It really should be. You know, it should be on every bus. Instead, we see, I love the sun, but we see the gorilla and the suns and all the other paid advertisement except the 211. And that should be, and we should be looking at more public service announcements. I love the billboards. I think we, we had a couple of years ago, we did the study on, on the best way to communicate. And one of the things that came back that, that right now currently, a lot of folks do look at the billboard, they do look at the light rails and the advertisements on the buses and all that. I love that Ralphie Attorney guy. He's everywhere. I love him, but he's everywhere. But there has to be a, a way for us to communicate. How that is done, I just, I mean, again, I'm, I'm not, I couldn't tell you how to do that. I don't know.
Chairman Galvin, and Dr. Staub might want to pipe in on this, but I think it's important to Supervisor Brophy McGee's point that fentanyl is an issue, but our bigger issue is meth and its stimulants. And we see those rates, people dying in the heat from stimulants at a far greater rate than those who are using fentanyl. But I don't know, Dr. Staub, if you want to.
Yeah, thank you, Janine, Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Brophy McGee. That is correct. And again, a lot, a lot of the work that Dr. Johnson and his office do help us identify those trends so that we can work with our partners. There is funding through opioid, opioid settlement funds that is going out to partners working in the community. We are making sure that they are all aware of the impact of heat on their communities so that they are not only doing the work that they are, are doing with, with the population they're working with, but also communicating this risk, communicating the resources of 211 and everything else that's out there.
I want to address the issue of fatalities and the impact it has on our medical examiner's offices. If I remember correctly, last year, we were being told as a board that funeral homes were, were moving deceased pretty quickly because they either didn't have space or they just didn't want to hold on to, to corpses and that the medical examiner's office was either overwhelmed or almost at capacity. Can you walk us through, even though there was a slight decline last year, of what are the issues that we should be worried about as a board regarding the medical examiner's office and fatalities? Thank you. Please identify yourself.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Galvin, members of the board. I'm Dr. Jeff Johnston. I'm the chief medical examiner. I serve as the department director for the Office of the Medical Examiner as well. And you're absolutely correct. Really, we've seen every July since 2022, a huge surge in the number of decedents that we have to take care of. And a lot of these are heat-related death cases or potentially heat-related death cases. So what that means for us is we have limited internal storage for those remains. We really need to process them, which means identify who they are. Sometimes they're in a state of decomposition, which makes that challenging to do. Once we've identified who they are, we've got to work with law enforcement partners or ourselves, notify the next to kin that their loved one has died, and then put them under pressure unfortunately to choose a funeral home. So once we're done with the examination, we've done all those parts and pieces to get this data about who's dying of what reliably to be able to release them to their funeral home of choice. And we have about seven to 10 days to do that normally. In these surge times, that number goes down. We've got to operate even faster. So, yeah, it's, it's very, very much a challenge.
If I can just add briefly, during our summer response, we are in close contact with Dr. Johnson's office. One of the benefits of responding in an emergency is, is bringing all of our partners together and sharing those updates weekly. And so we will continue to do that with our heat response so that we are aware of any resource challenges that any of our partners have so we can think as a community how to, how to respond to that and make sure that the systems are moving. So I wanted to touch briefly on our 2025 response and some of the plans that you all know what is coming along as we are, I think, gonna be at about 84 today, and we all know it's gonna get hot soon. We are fortunate that the funding that we use to assist jurisdictions and community-based organizations to expand evening and weekend hours of their sites will continue this upcoming summer. So we are continuing those contracts and those relationships to, to keep that benefit going. A lot of talk today about 211. I think we're all clear that that's a resource we all believe is, is really impactful to this response. We mentioned the, the curtailment of their hours as an effort to extend their services through the summer. So at this point, with that change in their operating hours, they will be available during the, during the days to continue to respond as they had before. And then we are again going to be one of the funders to get money for transportation. Importantly, we're working with our academic partners. So again, I mentioned a lot of interest. There's a lot of interest from academia to look at our data and kind of see what is of the most value. So trying to really put some dollar figures to what the response is, what does it really cost for these cooling centers to operate so that we can again be strategic in the way that both we and our partners are spending that money. And then again, we will continue to update our dashboard to meet the needs of the community. That has been, again, since 2006, an ongoing effort to add to our investigations that data that's most impactful so that we can respond. And with that, I would just like to thank everyone who's participated in pulling this together. Maricopa County, the Board of Supervisors, Dr. Johnson, the Medical Examiner, Human Services Department, Maricopa Association of Governments, who with us and jurisdictions help organize the Heat Relief Network along with cities and towns. And I'll give a nod to Dr. Sunnenschein who helped us prepare these. A lot of this work was championed by her and organized by her and wanted to recognize her as well.
Thank you. Supervisor Lesko has a question and I'll go to the board for closing comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On this la, this, this slide, can you remind me what all these acronyms mean? Like CBOs, what's that?
Yeah, thank you Supervisor Galvin and Ms. Lesko. So a CBO is a community-based organization. So those contracts go both out to cities and towns and jurisdictions as well as to a variety of community partners, including faith-based organizations that, that operate these sites during the heat season.
And PHIG, is that Public Health Something Grant?
That's the Public Health Infrastructure Grant, so intended to expand the capacity of public health to respond to a variety of challenges.
And MCDPH?
That's us, Maricopa County Department of Public Health.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think that's it. Thank you.
I think Supervisor Stewart has a closing comment.
Yes, thanks so much for the presentation. I know, I know this was extremely valuable to me and I think the community to understand where we are and where we're headed. So thank you very much for being here. Ms. Garza, can you send me and maybe the board a list of the action items that you heard from this meeting so that we have that in a recap? I appreciate it. Thank you.
I have one question, and I don't think anyone else has closing comments, so I'll make comments as well. Last summer, Governor Hobbs declared a state of emergency regarding heat. And as I recall, it was probably in late July or in August. And I remember that the public was like, hey, why are you calling a state of emergency now? It's too late. Most of the deaths have already occurred. Summer's almost over. And then from what I learned, you, from what I was told, you call a state of emergency when certain funding has run out, it doesn't mean, hey, we think that this event is gonna happen, but it was more of a, of an administrative thing. Are there, I guess, did you believe that the state reacted as well as it could last summer? And what do you hope to see from the state and from state leadership going into this summer?
Thank you, Chairman Galvin. I think that was the year before.
Okay.
So last year, I don't think they declared the state of emergency. Last year, the state developed what they called cool containers, and they rolled those out across the state and they were, they're somewhat mobile. City of Phoenix actually took one and they put it next to Burton Bar as an overflow. And it's just a place, it's like a mobile, I don't know.
It's a shipping container.
Shipping container, thank you, yes. So we're not aware of what the investment might be. We haven't heard anything new this year. That's not to say there won't be. We just, we haven't heard anything yet about what this upcoming season might look like from the state.
Okay. What I'd like to see from my personal standpoint is the governor and other state leaders take a more proactive role and use their positions as bully pulpits. I mean, obviously our jobs are very important, but frankly, we don't get much attention, right? And so, yeah, for right reasons or wrong reasons. But I want to, I want to thank you all for your presentation and, and Ms. Sunnenschein, Dr. Sunnenschein, wherever she is right now, thank you as well. But I think what you can see from this board is that we took your presentation very serious. You heard a lot of great questions here today and you see a board that is really committed to this issue. And frankly, I think everyone here in this room is bracing ourselves for what we're up against this summer because there's no reason to think it's not gonna be unlike the last five or 10 summers. And so we can pray for relief from heat in certain respects, but at the same time, it's still gonna impact people. But we've heard so many different issues that impact this in such a variety of ways that come at it from so many different directions. Meth, fentanyl, the homelessness crisis. I mean, think about all of our constables right now that are literally carrying out the law, executing the law, but they have to do unfortunately that dirty job of evictions. And how many times do we see in the newspaper every single month that evictions in Maricopa County have gone up? And these are people who really are trying to pay their rent. These are not deadbeats. These are people who actually are employed. I cannot believe how many times I've met people who are employed with children in school that they like, and unfortunately, they were evicted. That's just another function of our housing crisis that we have here as well. But now we have to deal with heat and we have a medical examiner's office that is bracing itself as well. So as you can see, this board is committed to working with you and to helping you be successful as you can because I think there was a lot of great ideas that were offered here. But more than anything, I think this shows that this board cares. So thank you all for your time. We appreciate it. Okay, thank you. I think we're gonna go into recess and then we're gonna go take on a number two in the other conference room. Thank you all.
Good job, thank you.
I was gonna do that over there after recess. Thank you.